October 13th meeting, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what today is. I quickly want to report on closed session. The four members of the board, our legal counsel, Adam Constance, our human resources director, Mr. Hushin, Dr. McComas, and the executive assistant, Ms. Manley, were in closed session. We received legal advice and discussed personnel but took no action. The personnel actions will be voted on in open session. I am looking for Ms. Swanson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. I'm looking for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I bring a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
All righty, Mr. Queen has a motion. I'm looking for a second. Looking for a second.
I'll make a second.
Ms. McKenzie has the second. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Does Ms. Swanson vote on that?
She is.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
All righty. Has anyone signed up for public participation in this family? Thank you very much. I just want to remind everyone the rules of public participation. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent, write a letter to the Board of Education, and a response will be sent back to you. All righty, Mr. Fluke here to talk about NAMI and Kent and Queen Anne's affiliate.
Thank you very much, Superintendent McComas, Ms. McGee, and members of school board. I'm Bill Fluke. I wear a lot of hats, but I'm here tonight wearing my mental health one. NAMI, National Alliance on Mental Illness, has a local chapter in Kent and Queen Anne's County, and I participate in that. I would like to extend an invitation to all of you, to everybody here, to attend a meeting of CCAC, that is, the Special Education Citizen Advisory Committee, which is meeting at Kent County Middle School next Wednesday, the 22nd, a week from this Wednesday. And we're going to be talking about what NAMI does, who we are, what our programs are, some issues regarding mental health in young people, how to reduce stigma. We're going to talk about some of our outreach efforts, going to talk about advocacy a little bit, and we're going to have a fun activity. So I would like you all to come. The meeting starts at 5:00. I think they have pizza. We're going to start presenting around 5:30 or so and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, was that it, Ms. Manley? All righty, Dr. McComas, your report, please.
Yes, so, good evening, everyone. I just want to highlight a few things. One, thank you, Dr. Fluke, for pointing out the CCAC meeting for next week, Wednesday, October 22nd at 5:00 at middle school. October is also anti-bullying month, and so our schools have a number of campaigns going on to help with character education and to help anti-bullying. We know it's important if you see bullying happen to call it out, say something so that we intervene. Next, I wanted to do a follow-up on our board policy tracker. We were, just recently had gotten confirmation, our board doc system where everything will be posted, was recently acquired by Diligent, which is a different company, and we need to confirm that the platform migration was stable and that we don't want to put stuff in and then lose it in that migration process and have to do double work. So we just, last week, got confirmation that that is fine to move forward. Internally, we have weekly meetings scheduled where the team and I are going to just start at the beginning and work through the policies and then adjust the procedures so that the numbers, the nomenclature system works together and everything's posted. So we are working through that. Next, I want to talk about this Wednesday, October 15th, is parent conferences. So I hope that you reach out and organize conferences. If you're not able to make it that day, just reach out to your student's teacher to organize alternative times. But this Wednesday, our elementary and middle school will be closed for students to allow ample time for parent and teacher conferences at the high school. It's an early dismissal at 11:25 so that parent-teacher conferences can occur that afternoon as well. This Thursday, just as a reminder, is a local professional development day, so therefore students are not at school. And then Friday is, our teachers have access to the Maryland State Teachers Association Conference. It's an annual event. So there's some of the highlights, and then I also, I will give an update on the middle school project shortly on the agenda that was posted separately.
That is a good question. Sure. How many of our teachers actually participate in the state convention?
It fluctuates year by year. I don't have the exact number, you know.
But do some of them go?
Some of them do. Often times, what you'll see is teachers will go together in a group. Oh, do you have some of the data?
It's typically in our collective bargaining meetings, the folks that serve on the executive committees for the support players and teachers are usually the ones that go and...
Okay, thank you. Okey-dokey. Mr. Hushin, golden anchor.
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, school board members. I am honored to be up here tonight to award our first golden anchor of the 2025-2026 school year. And joining me in sharing that award tonight is high school principal Chris Hempstead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. McComas, President McGee, and members of the board, and welcome to our publics. It is an honor for me to recognize, for the Golden Anchor Award nomination for October, Mrs. Skylar Cochran, which is our administrative secretary for Kent County High School. So I'm excited to honor her today. I'm going to talk just a little bit about her titles. So we have lots of titles for her, and they just keep growing and growing. So Mrs. Cochran is the quiet giant of KCHS. She is calm, steady, and strong. In the daily rush or any emergencies that we have, Mrs. Cochran is the constant that keeps KCHS running smoothly. Mrs. Cochran is also the go-to person. When staff say, "Give it to Mrs. Cochran," it's because that she knows that she'll follow through every time with care, speed, and precision. So she's well-known through our staff at Kent County High School with all that she is able to do for the staff and for our students there. Mrs. Cochran is the organizer of everything. From homecoming to prom to our proudest day graduation, she handles every event with professionalism and pride. She is also the student connection. Every student knows her name and says, "I love Mrs. Cochran." She supports, listens, and reminds them that they belong. We are represented by the anchor of KCPS, and Mrs. Cochran is the anchor of Kent County High School. She embodies the KCPS mission, anchor in excellence through collaboration, equity, and heart. She also is the spirit of "we rise together." So last year, we went back and looked at our values and came up with, as a community and also as students and also as our staff, that we rise together. She does that by showing respect, integrity, success, and empowerment in all that she does for Kent County High School. And she's our MVP. She brings that unmatched expertise, gentle humor, and unwavering dedication to our school every single day. We are better because of her. We are proud to celebrate Mrs. Cochran this evening as our golden anchor coming from Kent County High School.
Please join us in honoring Mrs. Cochran.
(inaudible)
Yeah, I couldn't tell if it was glitter. I like the little, the light-up shoes.
What we've all been waiting for, the audit. Thank you very much. Here we go.
Good evening. Hi, good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go through this very quickly, but I think every year I say, "If anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me and ask." You should have the audited financial statements in front of you. If you'll turn to the first page after the table of contents, that's the independent auditor's report. And in that report, the opinion section, second paragraph, where we state, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information of the Board of Education of Kent County, Maryland as of June 30th, 2025." That is a clean opinion. We found no issues to bring to your attention. That's the best opinion you can get. So that's the best part of this report right here. If you'll turn to page four, that's the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. And again, similar to the auditor's opinion, we found no issues in internal control or compliance to bring to your attention. Moving past that section on page, it starts on page seven, is the management discussion and analysis. And this is basically presenting financial matters at a high level that should be easier to read and more comprehensive without having to go through all. There's a lot of detail in these financials, so this is kind of high level. I will flip through that, starting on page 16, is the first set of financial statements that appear in the report. So the first two statements are the statement of net position and the statement of activities. And those statements are on the full accrual basis. So you'll see capital assets in here and your long-term liabilities. Any questions on those? The capital assets, we're referring to buildings, schools, school buses, things of that nature. And then long-term liabilities include things like pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities, and then any debt that you may have related to those fixed assets.
I think we did have a question.
Yeah, mine was further down. I was just wondering, the unrestricted, under the net position, could you just explain a little bit what that means?
It's basically, what's driving that is the other post-employment benefits liability. So what's required is, you actually have, I believe, Bolton Partners does an actuarial evaluation on what other post-employment benefits are going to cost in the future. Your pay-as-you-go with those. So it's not like there's any cost year-to-year with those, but that's what we may come up with, the liability, I believe, and I can find it, the liability is fairly significant for those, which basically your liability goes up and it drives that unrestricted net position into a deficit. Does that help, or?
So, like, for our retirees, that we have to carry so much to make sure that we can cover their benefits, knowing that that's always kind of a moving target. And please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, for example, we may have retirees who pass away, and so we're not paying their benefits, but we have new retirees who come when we're picking up, and that doesn't always equal out. Did I kind of put that in layman's terms?
You did. You did. And actually, on page 34 is the long-term liabilities breakout. So just the liability just related to that other post-employment benefits in total is sitting at about 16.6 million. But again, you pay-as-you-go with those. It looks the same in every board of education, at every government agency. There's a huge liability on the books for what is due out in the future as people retire.
Yep. So anything that's OPEB is really for our retirees.
Correct.
I have a question, because this is my first time ever doing an audit as far as being on the Board of Education. And you can explain this to me like I'm three. I won't be offended. When I hear audit, my purpose, or I think the purpose, is to find negligent spending or wrongful funding use or lack of responsibility when it comes to financial management. Would that be correct?
If we look for that, we certainly design our procedures with a risk assessment, but we didn't find any of that in our procedures.
And what does those type of issues normally look like? I'm just throwing examples. So, because this is a lot for me to read for the first time.
It is.
For sake of example, Dr. McComas goes to the Bluebird and says she's having a meeting with staff, but she's really in there just eating all the clam strips because she likes fried clam strips. Would you all look for something like that and say, "Hey"?
So I will say this, we obviously can't look at every transaction when we come in.
Right.
So just to kind of give everyone a general idea of what we do, the audit starts in usually May, and that's when we're looking at, one of the big things we do, kind of to your point, is we look at all the expenditures of federal awards.
Okay.
And we say, okay, and every year, certain programs have to be audited as far as that. When you were receiving a lot of your SER funding related to COVID, that was audited every year. We're looking at that, and that's where we really are digging into expenditures to look for compliance and internal controls and that type of thing.
Okay.
When we're looking at your, a lot of the funding, we're looking at what MSD, like, we reach out to MSD and say, "Hey, we want a list of every cash receipt you sent to the Board of Ed this year." And they supply us a list, and then we look at that compared to what's been recorded in the general ledger to make sure those are in sync with each other. Same thing, the county sends us a confirm and says, "Hey, this is how much money we sent over." And we're looking to verify that what's on the books matches what outside organizations are saying they spent. We drill down into the expenditures a lot on those grants that come from MSD.
So this, go ahead.
No, you finish.
So this audit would be at a federal, state, and county level?
Correct. It's the entire, yep, it's the entire thing.
All right.
And again, you may, and I don't remember the last time you had the legislative auditors in.
Oh, we just...
Recently. They really dig deep. We're more just financial statements. It's at a much higher level, what we're doing year-to-year than the legislative auditors get into. But same principle, looking to make sure, if we found something, that's where you would see that opinion in the front. There would be a lot more pages in all of this if we had actually found something. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am.
And just to maybe support that a little bit, the president of the board, which happens to be me this year, they reach out and one of the...
Yes, ma'am.
And just to maybe support that a little bit, the president of the board, which happens to be me this year, they reach out and one of the many layers of, one of the things they ask the president is, are you aware of any fraud that's going on? So there are lots of ways that they collect information.
Is this a company that we choose to audit us? Or is it somebody the state say, hey, you're doing Kent County Public Schools?
It's not. There was an RFP that went out, and I think we're in maybe our third or fourth year of that RFP. I think we usually go about every five years and ask for independent auditors.
Because we used to have, we previously have worked with other auditors.
What's the name of the company, UHY?
It's UHY, and it's a really long name that I'm not going to, I can look in the audit report. Hold on.
And while she's doing that, just to give you a little more context, Mr. Queen, and for any of the, you know, viewing audience, this is an annual process. So every year, at the end of a 12-month financial year, that whole, that 12 months is audited, right? So an audit is not necessarily indicative of something is wrong. It's a proactive monitoring process. And sometimes in those processes, not here in this case, certainly, things do come up. But just know that it is a proactive system of monitoring and being transparent and accountable to everyone. So this is an annual 12-month process. And then she mentioned the legislative audit. That is every, is it five years? And that's a state mandated audit. And again, that's a super deep dive. We are just wrapping up one of those. So that report will be coming forward. I'm not sure if it'll be in November, probably in November. So we'll be talking about that state legislative audit as well, just to give you a sense. And as she mentioned, lots of grants are audited for those individual cases as well.
Right. So every year, an audit has to be completed and submitted to MSD, the Maryland State Department of Education, by September 30th for every Board of Education throughout the state. And other states have different requirements. So we come in every year. I mentioned, we start usually in May. The big ramp up is about, year-end is June 30th. You have about six weeks to kind of get everything organized and ready for us. And we're usually in about middle of August. And we work from August straight through to September 30th to look at stuff and get everything wrapped up.
So Dr. McComas, so I make sure I'm fully understanding. So when Ms. Alicia Stew used to say, we're preparing for the audit.
Yes.
This is.
Yes. And things like, you often heard Mr. talk about recodes. So you know how we get grants that reimburse us, right? So those recodes are often reimbursement processes. And so all of that needs to be, as she said, kind of processed through so that when all is done and said, we can look exactly and see where everything, if money came in, what was it used for, did it go to where it was supposed to be?
Correct. And sometimes, I haven't gone all the way through, but sometimes, even though we get a quote-unquote clean opinion, there are recommendations of things that we could do to avert ending up in the doghouse.
Right. There's a lot of times there's recommendations. I don't think there were any recommendations this year, which is considering the turnover that happened right in the middle of August. So I'm going to get to this point, but I was going to thank Mr. Kirby and his team and everybody for the effort they put in, the help they put in getting this done. Because it is very challenging, and Board of Eds are unique in their accounting, so. Anything else, or we're good? So the first set of statements was the statements, the statement of net position and statement of activities, which are full accrual. The next set, which are on page, they start on page 18 and run through page 21, are the modified accrual financial statements. So this is your balance sheet and your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And we say modified accrual. What this means is they're more current financial resource focused. So accounts receivable that you're going to receive in 60 to 90 days, or liabilities you're going to pay within 60 to 90 days. And you will see as you go, and this is broken out by funds. So you have a general fund, a capital projects fund. And then your non-major governmental funds are your food service fund, the school nutrition. And then also you have the Smith Estate, which is a small endowment, for lack of a better word, that was provided, is in that fund. And you'll see this breaks out, it's on page 18, all of your assets, your liabilities, and then your fund balance at the end of the year is what's on that balance sheet. And looking at this, you can see total governmental funds, your assets are about 7.5 million versus liabilities of about 4.6 million. And you end up with a total fund balance of about 2.8 million. Questions on that? If not?
Yeah, I did have a quick question on page 20. It talked about excessive expenditures over revenues.
Correct.
And I think this is more for Dr. McComas. With rightsizing of a budget for fiscal year 26, did that, like, did that work to correct that issue?
Yeah. So what you'll see, and this, when we get to the back, I was going to make sure I highlight. When we get to the fund balance, I'll be able to talk about the amount that we carried over and plus the use of.
On page 54, I think it's page 54. I'm going to get there, probably.
Yep, 52, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. So that's your statement. And again, these are current, this is what's going to come in. This doesn't include encumbrances. So Board of Education's encumber funds, meaning you have purchase orders, orders that you've cut at the end of the year that you know you're going to use fiscal year 25 resources for. These statements in the front do not include those encumbrances. But as we move to the back, there is a statement that does include those. And we'll get to that shortly, so. So after those financial statements, page 22 is the statement of fiduciary net position. And then there's a statement of changes in fiduciary net position. So previously, when we talked about that OPEB, the other post-employment benefits, you actually have, at the end of, at 6:30, at June 30th, 2025, you have approximately 1.6 million that you put in trust. And that's with the MAVE trust. So there's several Board of Eds that are actually investing together funds to be used towards that liability in the future. And that, it kind of reduces, you have a total OPEB liability than what you have in trust to get to that net OPEB liability. So that's what this statement is showing. Investment income during the year, and then any administrative expenses related to that are what's on these, what's in this fiduciary net position statements. Following that is pages and pages and pages of required disclosures. None of these really change during the year. If anybody has any questions on these, I would be happy to go over them. But I'm going to go through them just really quickly. Note two just is the summary of all your significant account, accounting policies. Note three talks about your cash, inter-fund amounts, where maybe food service fund has, I don't want to use the word borrowed, but there's money that transfers back and forth between all these funds to balance. Note five is your capital assets. Six is long-term liabilities. Page 34 is your pension. And your, so your pension is with the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System, similar to the OPEB. An actuary comes in and looks and said, hey, this is what the liability is for future pension costs. And that footnote goes to about page 40?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
I do as well.
On page 28, and again, I think this is one more for you. With budget amendments, it talks a bit under section E. It just talks about how the budget may be amended. And I was just wondering, is this when it may be requested to use the fund balance to cover any unexpected increases? Like, is that?
Yes, it could be. For example, I think tonight we'll be doing a budget line adjustment, right? So when we were closing out the year, it may be that we spent more money in transportation than we had originally anticipated. Let's say we spent $1,000 more, just to make easy numbers. So we went over by 1,000 in transportation. So then what I do is we look across the other kind of buckets of money to say, okay, well, I need to gather 1,000 to balance that out. So I'm going to look at where I didn't spend. Maybe I didn't spend as much on construction paper or, you know, athletic equipment or something like that. And then I have to get permission, though, to move it out as other accounts to move it into transportation. And I look to my accountants to make sure in their auditor, make sure I'm using everyday language in an appropriate way. So I hope that was helpful. But that's, you know, we're always, at the end of the day, while we have these organized into the different categories, at the end of the day, it's one bucket of money. And is it in the red or is it in the black?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Page 33, letter O, cash and cash equivalents. Can you explain what that means? And the reason I ask, because I see the board considers. So I'm on a board, and I want to know what I should be considering.
So on page, so what?
Page 33.
Page 30, so cash and investments? Or what particular sentence are you looking at?
Letter O, cash equivalents on page 33.
You know, I thought the same thing. It's actually page 31. If you're looking at the itself. Yeah, sorry, because I was making the same mistake.
Oh, I see, right, like the digital thing doesn't line up. Okay.
So it would be one page above. So page 32?
31.
Right, it's in note two, summary of significant accounting policies.
Yes.
Letter O, cash and cash equivalents.
So from your perspective, I believe all of your cash is in depository accounts with a financial institution, with the bank. Someone can remind me. I don't remember off the top of my head what bank. Chase. But it's all cash. What we see in some locations is if you have, let's say, certificates of deposit that were going to mature within the next three months, we would consider those a cash equivalent.
Understood.
Okay, so if it's something, if you had a CD that didn't mature for 18 months, then we would treat that as an investment. But if it matures in three months, it's considered a cash equivalent. Does that?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
There's a lot of disclosures about pensions that are just required. And no, most of the wording throughout here, if you went online and looked at any other Board of Ed, it's almost identical word for the, the numbers are going to look different because everybody's numbers are slightly different. But a lot of this is just standard verbiage that has to go in here. Starting on page 41 is, we talked about the OPEB or all the disclosures that were required about your other post-employment benefit plans. And that goes on through to about page 9, I think. That goes through, that ends on page 50, the required disclosures. And then on page 50, note 10 is finance purchases. So a lot of times, that's things like your buses or vehicles. A lot of times, you'll purchase those on, or you're paying over time. It might be a three-year loan to pay off buses or those types of things. That's what shows there. Note 11 is intangible right to use, use assets. And what happened with that, I think about two or three years ago, the Governmental Accounting Standard Board said, hey, we don't have enough information when you're leasing items. So they're not going to be yours at the end of the lease, but we don't have enough information about liabilities related to, hey, I've leased this for the next five years. So then it started to require us to put kind of those same notes as we do with loans or leases on the books to show kind of what is owed over time for like leases and things like that. And then on page 52, sorry, I think I said 54 earlier, but 52, I think, is, note 12 is the fund balance. And I think we talked about that a little bit earlier. So you'll see under the general fund, this kind of breaks down. You had a fund balance at the end of the year on that modified accrual basis of about $2,572,019. Almost 1.5 million of that is, if you look at your fiscal year 26 budget, you've set that aside, you said, we're going to use this to balance our fiscal year 26 budget. So what we're saying is, of that 2.6 million, 1.5 is already committed for expenditures in fiscal year 26. You have a contingency fund of 500,000 that you basically like to hold there as kind of a reserve. Go ahead.
No, I'm asking Dr. McComas. I think we spent that 500,000, didn't we?
Well, we did, but what you're seeing here, so what we did last year, if I may just add to her point, in the section where it says committed, we did take 1.5 rounding of last year's budget to put towards this year's budget. And we also need it because we had such a significant deficit. We had to use our 500 contingency. So we put that towards that as well. But what you're seeing here is we had enough when all the.
By the time they did the audit, the money was back in?
Yes.
Okay, I just needed clarification for that. Okay.
Exactly. Once we did all those recodes and everything settled, we had enough to put, return the contingency, which was one of our goals.
Right, yeah, I got you. Okay, I just.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure I took the time to explain.
No, I'm glad you did. And then, and she probably knew. Did you know that the 500 was gone and then we put it back? Did you know that?
The funny thing is, I didn't know it was gone. When we were working on this audit, I know Alicia was assisting with the audit somewhat. She reached out and she said, you've got to make sure that 500,000 is back on that line. I didn't know you would use it and put it back.
But I think it's important that you didn't know we used it, but it is back. And I don't want somebody to think, oh, we pulled a fast one over you. Okay.
It would have been, if there hadn't been 500,000 there to put there, it would have been a light bulb at that point.
I got you. Thanks.
Yeah.
Sure. And then in assigned fund balance, so where we say school activities here, all the schools have cash accounts and are collecting money for field trips and sporting events and things of that nature. And they collect money and they spend money, and they have money on hand to use for future activities. There's some funds set up for, like, the class of 2026 for prom or home, whatever that may be. So there's part of that fund balance belongs to those different schools, which leaves unassigned fund balance, which is available to spend of right around 371,000 at the end of the year.
Dr. McComas, when she says available to spend, do we already know what's going to be done with that?
No, that's why it's labeled as unassigned. So this is, think about fund balance. Again, the way I think about in simple, everyday terms is, this is money, the unspent money, the leftover money. So with our leftover money, we put our 500 back into our contingency. And so we have 371,000 that was unspent and unassigned because we didn't know that we'd actually have it at the end, right? What's because the recodes weren't all finished, and we weren't finished paying payroll and all those things. So this is money available, I would say, this would be our first go-to emergency money. So I don't know, let's say, for example, for, you know, goodness forbid, a bus breaks down and it's just not repairable, and we have to go buy a bus or lease a bus. That would be our go-to money before we ever went to the 500 contingency.
Like our birdness.
Yep.
All right.
And then the next section is, after that page is the required supplementary information. And this is the page usually people are most concerned about, just since we have some newer people and a lot of questions, and feel free to jump in here. What this page shows is for your general fund, it shows what your original budget was, the final budget, so after amendments throughout the year, and then the actual number, what was actually extended or encumbered related to that original and final budget. And then the column over on the right is the variance between the final budget. And I just want to point out, in revenues and the expenditures, you'll see this restricted federal and state. Those are fundings, those are grant funds that come in that have to be expended for a specific purpose. You budget for those based on the grant award amount, but those may or may not be expended by the end of the year. So you kind of need to, I don't, I always tell people, don't really look at that line item because if you have the funds, they will be extended in a future year and have to be used for a specific purpose. So if you look at that Kent County, like if you look at, the final budget was 20.4 million, and you were about 30,000 under. And some of that is because now, I believe with, I'm seeing with like blueprints, some funding is restricted for use for certain things. So it has to be deferred into the future. It can't just be spent haphazardly or for any purpose. So that's what's causing some of those ups and downs within the revenue category. And then down under expenditures and encumbrances, under those variances, earlier when we were talking about, for example, in the instructional salaries, you actually over-expended the budget by that 62,000 or 63,000. I think when you see your budget amendments tonight, it's going to have something to, so that you're not over-expended in those categories. And actually MSD requires that, it will not allow you to be over-expended.
So how does that balance out?
So I think what's going to happen is there's probably going to be a budget amendment that you'll talk about. You're going to move money from one of these other categories that was.
Even out the 62. Understood.
Okay, yeah.
But it's a, it's a great example of right here, you know, of how all these checks and balances do work out.
Would that happen for every difference, like further down the 5600 for, I guess, that student transportation?
It will. It will happen for any that are unfavorable, will have to be brought up so they're not unfavorable. So something will shift around. And I think what's important to note too, you had, in the amend, in your final budget, you had budgeted to use about 2.4 million of fund balance to, but to balance everything out. And you ended up only needing to use about 1.5 million. So you were actually about, I think, what? of fund balance to balance everything out, and you ended up only needing to use about one point five million, so you were actually about, I think, what is that here? About eight hundred and seventy thousand less than what you thought you would have to use when you did that.
So the five hundred thousand went back in the fund balance, where did the other three hundred thou go?
That's also in the fund balance.
Okay.
That's.
Right.
But a different, a different fund balance, or?
This whole thing is fund balance. So this whole thing is fund balance.
Okay.
Okay, so within fund balance, big bucket, right, we have different kind of categories, right? So we have the one hundred, one point five that we used last year.
Yeah, I'm straight on that.
Okay, well, that's, the five hundred is there.
Right.
And then the unassigned is the three seventy-one, so when you put three seventy-one plus five hundred, you get the eight seventy-one.
That I got, no, I understand that, I guess what I was asking, and maybe you've answered it, and I'm dense enough, I didn't get it. So obviously, we had eight hundred and some extra that we ended up nuts, so the five hundred thou went into what I refer to as the fund balance, yeah, the contingency or whatever. So the three hundred and seventy-one thousand that's unassigned, is it sort of somewhere to be used for this year, or are we waiting to use it for next year?
Well, it's available for this year, it's in the fund balance, it's the unassigned.
Okay, so there's actually a fund balance of eight hundred thousand, five hundred for the bird's nest, or whatever you're calling it, and three hundred thousand unassigned in that.
Well, the three hundred thousand is the bird's nest, correct?
Well, it's the bird's nest.
Well, the savings, the eight hundred thousand that was left over, we put the five hundred thousand back into contingency. The three hundred thousand or so that was left over, she was explaining.
We could use as we need to.
I got it, yeah, I got it. Who came up with the bird's nest?
That's what I call my savings.
Okay, I got you, okay.
Are we good?
Yeah.
You're here tonight.
Honestly, it's better than when everybody sits there and I'm like, I don't think they have a clue what I'm saying, but nobody says anything.
We ask questions in our discussion.
Any other questions on this page fifty-four with the fund balance, or the, with the statement?
Is it fair to say that on page fifty-four, that's like the biggest snapshot?
That is, because that's including, what this includes is all revenues, all expenditures, all encumbrances, where these other statements that are required are variations of this, but this is whatever, because you really, from your perspective, I think you want to see all the expenditures and all the encumbrances, so.
This is basically where we vote on our budget from, it comes from this information right here, this snapshot, would that be correct?
I'm not involved with the budget, but I went from there.
So, for example, what we're looking at was last year's budget here, so you can see the original, what they planned, in the end, what was finalized, and then you'll see how that actually lived out to be true, or, you know, where we maybe overspent, like, you know, and transportation is always an example, right? We had planned, we originally planned to spend two million, then the final plan was two point two million, and then in actuality, we spent two point two, three, four million, which was over by five thousand. So that's actually not too bad for transportation. Really, only five thousand over in transportation is pretty decent, in my opinion. I hope that was helpful.
No, yeah, yeah, yes.
And then after that are just schedules that are required related to the OPEV and the pensions and items like that, I'm not gonna go through that, all of that comes directly from Maryland State Retirement Pension or the actuaries that you hire to determine what your OPEV liability is. And then as you go through, there's additional supplementary information that talks about just from the general fund, for the general fund, a schedule of revenues, where all the different revenue sources came from. In the general fund, that's on page sixty-three. You have a combining balance sheet and statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance, which got cut off for food service and the Smith Estate. And then on the last page, on page sixty-seven, we talked a little bit about that school activities. Page sixty-seven is just a breakdown by school. And essentially what this would be is cash on hand at the schools, receipts for the year, dispersments for the year, and an ending of cash that's on hand at the schools. Any question, any more questions on?
Probably not so much specifically for today, I think just, I would like to learn more about the school activities funds.
Sure.
And kind of like what qualifies, and especially the high school level, do students get to provide input on those activities, or what does that look like?
It can vary school by school, so.
That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, and so I don't want to put our principal on the spot, but you know, as a high school principal, like she was saying, you could have lots of difference for a subaccounts running through there. So you could have, you know, the debate team that does fundraising to be able to go to like the state debate championship, and they may have a sub-line in there where they're raising money to go in to the account for that particular field trip, if you will. You could have funds in there, donations or fundraising for the school play. Prom, like you said, different classes, oftentimes each class creates its own account, and so they may be growing that money over the whole time they're in high school and use that to help offset the cost of prom, field trips, you know, some classes donate, you know, a bench or bookcases or things like that, so. When we unpack that, it can be a whole variety of things, but I would agree that it's important to be using that money in a timely fashion. And so I think it's always, you know, when you want to look in to figure out if a school is carrying a large amount year upon year upon year, what's underneath that, like what is it for a particular cause? I've also seen instances in other places I've served where, for example, there was a PTA who they, I'm trying to describe this, so there was an elementary PTA who always gave scholarship money to a graduate, a senior who had went to that elementary school, and it was something during the pandemic, it was kind of a different process, and so they gave to the middle, my middle school the donations for the scholarships that they wanted us to follow through with the kids while they were in middle school and continue to add to give scholarships by the time they were seniors. I don't know if that was confusing or not, but I guess what I'm saying is, it can be a lot of different things, and we try to make sure that we are spending the money in a timely fashion. And I just want to clarify, when you say it's cash on hand, it's not in our school buildings on hand, it's in the bank account.
Yes, no, every, every, every school has their own, yeah, has their own bank account, and I would just reiterate, the system that you use for that and the reporting for that does show, and a lot of it is where clubs are collecting money or the classes are collecting money to use for things going forward, you know, and sometimes it's just the timing on all of that, or when they collected the funds and when the event is and things of that nature as well, so. But yes, there's not cash sitting around.
Dr. McComas, let me ask a follow-up question, so like in the instance of the high school that has a little more money, somebody like Garnett that seems to be on a lower tier money. If they're not able to fundraise or find other means to prepare for the host of events you just mentioned, is that something where we would reallocate a line item to assist in that?
Yeah, usually if principals need support on something, I always say to them, don't assume we can't afford it. I said this a lot last year, because we sort of have a mindset of like, we can't buy things, like we have no money, we can't buy things. And I know, Ms. McGinn, I had this conversation, we can buy things, right, one-time purchases. It's our ongoing cost that we have to be really thoughtful around because, you know, like personnel is ongoing cost, so. So for example, I think there were some banned instruments or something.
Well, we came across, like, for example, there were some donations for like uniforms and stuff like that, where the a step in the process was skipped because there was the assumption that we couldn't, so they started asking people for a donation without having come here first and say,
Yeah.
You know, and then there was the perception that we were poor or stingy, and you might say no, but at least ask before you assume the answer is no.
Right, because if I can support our students in any way, I will, I will do that, like I'll move things around to make things happen for children, but I need to be in the conversation, so, so, exactly, so like if Garnett were trying to raise money for a field trip, and let's say they didn't raise as much as they were hoping to, they could talk to us, and that might be an example of where we might go to that three hundred and seventy-one thousand, and I might come to the board and say, could I use, you know, I don't know, five hundred dollars to supplement a field trip type of example?
Overstood.
I just, just want to make some general comments, first of all, I'm very happy that we got a clean report with no recommendations, I think that's a testament to Mr. Kirby, his team, and the work that Alicia had been doing ongoing.
Great.
Especially, this past year was a really challenging year for us financially, there were a lot of moving parts. We changed a policy, procedure, or we changed a policy, I guess, for the, for the fund balance. And it was not a unanimous decision, there were differences of opinion on the board, so I'm also heartened to say that I had my doubts that we were gonna be able to put the five hundred thousand back, and I'm really happy that we were able to do that this year, I'm still gonna be cautious, because this year might not be the same as next year, but anyhow, I'm relieved maybe, and happy at the same time, and I think it's important for the community to know that we're spending our money wisely, because it is taxpayer dollars, and we are spending it the way we publicly said we were going to, so that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Yeah.
And they did an outstanding, outstanding job with the budget, and, you know, Ms. Stewart resigned, so kudos to the team for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks so much.
This is a, an action item. So the administration is requesting board approval for the twenty twenty-five financial statement audit, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie's made the motion, is there a second? Ms. Dorsey has seconded, is there any more comments, conversations, questions? Alrighty, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, thank you again for actually a very understandable presentation as well. Alrighty, Dr. McComas, the middle school update.
Yes, so, thank you, this, I don't have any slides, but I just wanted to, for the general purpose of putting it on our agenda, for, I know many people were following our middle school project, last, for anyone who was not tuned in, last week, we met with our county commissioners, and they had a work session last Tuesday? It was Tuesday at four o'clock in the afternoon to discuss readiness to fund the construction phase of our project. In that work session, they identified numerous points of information that they believe they will have more information over the course of this legislative season and financial season, and so, long story short, in their six o'clock meeting, because they don't make motions for action in work sessions, so in their six o'clock meeting, which was a normal board meeting for them, Commissioner Price made a motion that was unanimously approved to do sort of two things. One, it gave us permission to go and get early bid, which we were requesting the opportunity to do, because if we go and try to get bids on materials in November and December, we're getting in front of the spring demand for construction materials, and so it's better pricing that you can get this time of year. So we're working with our project manager and construction manager to try to get good bids on being able to buy materials. So that was one part of the motion, the other part of the motion said that they would finalize a decision related to funding in May, because over the course of the legislative season, they are planning on pursuing additional state funding and working to again try to address our state share cost formula for Kent County, working with our delegation thirty-six around state work, so that's where we stand, we will not be putting shovels in the ground in February. Let's hope in May that we're, our commissioners have gotten all the information that they were hopeful to get, and that hopefully we can get even more state funding than we were granted last year, and that hopefully in May we will revisit and make a decision around when construction can begin. At this point, I would say that's, it's about a ninety-day pushout based on the motion that was unanimously approved last Tuesday. But of course, we know projects, if you do projects at your own home, sometimes, you know, the best laid plans have to be adjusted. So I think that's where we are, we will continue this legislative season to ask people to send letters of support and to testify in Annapolis that while we are grateful for the eight million that the General Assembly gave us last year in a pre-approval, that as grateful as we are for that, we still need additional support from the state on top of that, so that concludes my.
Go ahead and conclude, because I got questions.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, wow, go ahead.
Because the middle school got a lot of moving parts. Just so I'm clear, not only I'm clear, because a lot of people are asking me these questions, and the general answer, but I told them I'll double down on what I told them based on what we discussed today. With them, yes, they gave us the opportunity to bid early, but us moving it all the way back to May, doesn't that cost us money as a school system?
There is the potential that it will increase the cost of the project for two reasons. We know that the cost of materials just goes up over time, and the cost escalation, which is what that is referred to, is estimated by the construction managers and project manager to be five to eight percent a year. So, did I say that right, Mr. Kirby? So that could be about five million a year conservatively, it could be more than that, and if we look at what we were originally projecting for the project in twenty twenty-three, we were at that time thinking the project would be about fifty-four million. Today, it's sixty-eight million, so that tells you in twenty-four months, it went up, what, fourteen thousand? And so it is true that the longer we wait to get things moving, there will be an increase in costs. Part of going to early bid is to try to help proactively manage that escalation of costs. Our challenge there is, we don't know, right, if the the people that were going to, you know, the bids for the materials, if they will honor whatever the early bid pricing is, if they will honor that as far as May. It used to be standard practice that bids were honored for a hundred and twenty days.
Correct.
Not too bad for a history teacher, right, I have to just say, I've learned a lot. But they don't necessarily always hold them for a hundred and twenty days anymore, since, you know, the pandemic changed everything.
It's like ninety now.
It, right, so that's why it's a tight window, and we shall see. But if you were to like prorate that, you know, if it's five million a year, that's like, you know, you can break that down into what that would be, divided by six months, or divided by quarters, or divided by each month, to give you a sense of potential escalation.
Then also with that, from what I've been seeing from the county commissioners, well, I know one is very much full, because one, Commissioner Price, has actually given a plan that can pay for this right now. The other two say they want more information on the blueprint, but waiting on information for the blueprint, the entire state of Maryland and all twenty-four school districts are waiting for information on the blueprint. One of my concerns is, next year's an election year. We already know in February in Annapolis, they're busy doing their job. The chances they come out of that and give us more assistance without super-duper advocating like we've been building to do, and we come out of this with no more funding, they held us up to say no for about six months.
That, it is possible that it could work out that way, I think it's, you know, I know.
Be optimistic.
I do, I have to be, because if the superintendent's not optimistic, we're in trouble. But I think it's, you know, as much as certainly, I think it's unfortunate that we are sort of in this pause, I do think, none of us know, maybe we'll get more money from the state. The comptroller, for anyone who's not aware, our state comptroller publishes policy papers where she, she does a deep dive to try to help educate and explain to the community, the statewide community about the state budget and funding. She, in September, published one on the cost of school construction. She discussed many, many school systems in that process, Kent County was one in particular that was highlighted in that policy paper as an example of, we have, you know, the oldest inventory of school buildings in the state, and that context paired with declining enrollment gives us a particularly unique challenge. And then when you pair that with other mandated. And then when you pair that with other mandated cost from the state. So, you know, these things don't shake out across every school system or every county the same way. And so we kind of are in a bit of a rock and a hard place. And so I don't have a magic ball or a crystal ball to know, will we walk away with more money or won't we? Time will tell. If we do, then hey, great.
I got one more then, let's go, Arifa. Another one of the county commissioners' major concern is the community share of 50-50.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we already have it to about close to 70-30, 67, 68 percent.
Yes. So with the additional 8 million that the General Assembly authorized last year and the governor approved May 25th of 2025, with that additional 8 million and then the inter-agency on school construction, often referred to as the IAC, gave us an additional 3.5 million of state money. That brought us up to the state covering 67% of the eligible school cost or the eligible cost. It's important, a big misunderstanding, and if this is a really easy misunderstanding, is we naturally want to think in like everyday terms. So we want to think about the total cost of the project is roughly 68 million. And we think 50-50 means the state covers half of that 68 million and we cover the other half. Well, it's not quite that simple. There are, it's only the cost of construction. So what we call hard cost is what is shared. There are soft costs. Soft costs are things that local school systems put in place because they choose to do that. So for example, if you want bleach, extra bleachers in your gymnasium so you can have community basketball games, well, you're choosing to add that. That's not, that's moving it beyond just a classroom space for physical education.
It's a need to want.
Exactly. Other things like FFNE, so furniture fixtures and equipment for your new building, all of those are soft costs. They're not eligible for state share. So that's where it can, we want to simplify it nationally. That's, our brains are very efficient that way, but it does, you have to start teasing it apart.
But on the construction cost, we're not 50% anymore. We're up to 67.
Correct, correct.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and we're up to 67 and 34 on their side, which is going to, we need to add another 2.5 if we wait till May. And they're already feeling uncomfortable about the part that's being asked of them, which is stretched out at a three-year, at least three years. And myself, I feel like, you know, with everything that has run on, everybody who's advocated for the money and we have.
Will you do me a favor, Ms. Dorsey Poyer?
We have received funds that we weren't expecting to. I feel like that with faith, we should be thinking towards within three years, we'll be getting, there's a possibility, a great possibility, that we would be able to acquire more more funds. But the the main point I want to make is that, okay, at the end of May, because the stipulations that I heard them, the things that they mentioned, was something that's been talked about when I was running. That was four years ago. And it wasn't something that happened then. So why do they think it's going to happen now? I almost feel like, and this is just me, I'm not speaking for everyone else, is that they're using it as an excuse. I think I heard one of the commissioners say, I'm going to say, that we're kicking the can down the street, but I don't know to what street we're kicking it.
He said he's going to continue to kick it down the road a couple of months, something like that.
And the more we kick it, the more further it goes. And the longer that this thing is drawn out, the more money that we will owe and up the price that we need that we're already feeling like, hey, it's going to be hard to come by, but we don't mind doing, kicking it down the street and bringing about another 2.5 mill. To me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And considering that the school itself will not, it's not suitable for our kids.
Correct.
You know, it's already past that. We've already established that the school cannot be fixed, that nothing, and it can be repaired or the children, it's really unsafe for them to stay in.
And to stay second, that.
Yes. So with all of that and the knowledge of all of that, why are we even, you know, it shouldn't, we shouldn't still be on a pause. But we are. So what I wanted to know is what is the plan? You know, if we're not going to go along, go forward with digging and, you know, breaking ground, then what is the plan? Because our children, who is the future of Kent County, cannot remain in school.
Correct.
And all the things about Warden, we know that's a lie. Fake news. We went four years of of community and commissioners who were in meetings right along with myself. And we had everybody's input. They X'd off all of the options. And we got down to Chestertown. And one of the things that I remember sitting right here, and the commissioner was in the audience. And one of the things that they mainly were interested in, I thought, now, this is just my opinion, I'm not talking for everyone, is that they were worried about real estate and how it would look, you know, being able to list the middle school in being in town. Because that's something that people look towards when they're buying the schools. You have the elementary, we can say we have a new middle school. So what they wanted, they really wanted it to stay in Chestertown. And I remember saying, we can probably find it in a minute, I remember saying, the children do not own real estate. And really, we're not concerned when it comes to the real estate and what they can list. We want to do what's best for our students. I remember saying that. The the real estate and and different things like that, that was a concern of the commissioners. And and I'm going to say one more thing, and maybe I shouldn't. But when I was in that meeting, I felt like that they act like they were in a foreign land or underneath a rock. And all I could hear was, I can't, we can't, we can't. And I was wondering in my mind, well, what can we do? What can we do? Because our children are in a situation and they need our help.
Facts.
You know, and it's been the same commissioners, at least one, that's been there for 20 some odd years. And changes that should have been came about, steel is setting, and we have not done anything about it. At Kent County itself, it's not just the school, Kent County itself.
That's all, Arifa, that's all.
You know, I've lived here all my life, probably because I couldn't go anywhere else. But, you know, I love Kent County because it's a peaceful place. And even when I could, I wanted to raise my kids here because I felt it was safe. Okay? But we don't have a whole lot of opportunity here and we could have more. We could have more. It's just the point of people building and not just wanting to live the same, you know, we're, we're, we're the same way where I'm 60 years old and probably not much has happened here except for McDonald's. It's a fast food places. And that's it. I still, I mean, it's, matter of fact, I'm going to tell you the truth. I can't find a shoe string, you know, in the store. And my husband had, I was going to take a picture of it, but he said the shoe really came that way. But he had a tennis shoe that actually had a boot string in it, shoe strings. I thought he had done it because he couldn't find a shoe string, but he told me it came that way. So that's just a joke. But, you know, I'm just saying, we have to do something because our kids deserve it. And if we put time into them now, we won't have to worry about later. You know, when it's, it seems like it's easier for us to fund jail than it is to schools. I'm just saying. But we won't need the jail if we give the school the resource that they need. And these children deserve it, you know?
I'll just add a couple of comments. So Tuesday night, in between the work session and the commissioners' meeting at 6:00, there was a rally at Garnet Elementary School. And I was really happy to see that a number of young students, I mean, elementary and middle school kids. And one of the kids who spoke was Alden's eighth grade brother, Aldi, okay? And he spoke about things that I I don't think people really appreciate or take into consideration. That what being in that building actually means to the students and the staff that are in that building. And he told a tale of, I think it was a plumbing issue, but anyhow, it was in one of his classes. They were displaced for a month and put in another classroom that really was not big enough for that class. So that sort of drove the point home that the delay is actually affecting the the level of education we're able to deliver to our students. Second of all, Mr. Buckle, I thought, made a very eloquent presentation about being a middle school principal in the best of times, in the best school period is a challenge. Because of just the the challenging nature of middle school age kids. On top of everything else, he and his team has had, have had, last year had to deal with three different, I think, three different plumbing issues that actually shut the school down. So he says, you know, you tack that on to what a teacher and an administrator are charged with doing every day, makes their job exponentially more difficult. And I think those are sort of the intangibles that when we, obviously, money is the driving force, but I think it's lost in all of this discussion. And to Mr. Queen's point about next year being an election year. And I told this very frankly to a school, to one of the three commissioners, that this issue needs to be resolved sooner rather than later. Because the middle school has the potential, in my opinion, to become the number one campaign issue in 2026 if it's not dealt with.
It will be.
And I think it would be unfair to make our students and staff the innocents in political theater. And I'm I'm standing to that.
I agree.
I think that people don't realize that the problems at the middle school aren't just that the building does, looks out of date or that it like doesn't have the proper equipment. It's literally falling apart. Like people, like, I don't think, I don't think that clicks with some people. It's not just appearances or the numbers of how old it is. It's like there are real problems. I see pictures, I hear things that Augie tells me and that teachers tell me, and it's just like.
One, one other statement I want to make, because I I heard this firsthand from someone who does not support construction of a new middle school for, to me, a very unfounded and really prejudicial statement. That if our students scored better on test scores, state testing, they would support that. And my response was, so only kids who do well in school and score well on test scores deserve a good building. That's what you're trying to tell me, that, you know, you know, kids of privilege and kids who could go somewhere else and have other resources, they're the only ones that deserve a new functioning, modern school building. And to me, that is, that is part of the mindset we're battling against. And it's just, it's just ridiculous. And I could say a lot of other things that would get me suspended for five days all over again, so I'm not going to say it.
And I, because even with the rally, I think Dan, to me, gave the best empathetic overview. He's staff, he's an active community member, and he has children. That's a lot of a dynamic that a lot of us who are in this situation kind of go through. And this is, I'm going to pull Arifa, I'm not speaking for everybody. But a lot of the people that you hear speak the loudest, some of the media articles and some of the people that visit the commissioner meetings or board meetings when we're talking about budgeting, they're serving a selfish point of view. They have no skin in the game. They have no reason to articulate the points they have other than just saying, we don't want it. And I'll save mine for my board of ed discussion, because I actually, to the point where we're past today, based on the rally and the decisions we made, I have a lot to say about that. But overall, to the community, I like that we came out and supported. We're going to need that a lot more in the future, especially going into 2026. And it's just time for us to show the county that we're ready to move forward and we're ready to change. Whether that's leadership, whether that's who's making the decisions for us, whether that's your friend or family circle based on not wanting more for everyone else. It's going to come a time very shortly where we all have to step up and put our money where our, well, we don't have the money. But you all know what I'm saying. So I digress.
Alrighty. Thank you. So we're going to move on to education services. Dr. Walker?
Good evening.
Good evening, President McGee, Dr. McComas, and members of the board. Tonight, we have the unofficial September 30th enrollment report. The official report, as you know, comes from MSD and I believe it happens around mid-November. I know you've had a chance to review the report, so we can review it briefly and I can answer any questions that you might have.
How often do the unofficial numbers change from what MSD sent back?
Probably very often, but but not much, like with in a student or two or three.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's a good question.
And let me just take a moment for the general public, the difference between our unofficial count and what is, comes from the state is the official count. In that, the difference is the state goes through and analyzes the data across all school systems to make sure that, like if Mary McComas was in Harford County schools last year and this year I'm showing in Kent County, they want to make sure that I've come off the Harford County books so that I'm not being counted twice or maybe being undercounted. So that's what the state does in their analysis to to verify that, you know, that we're not double counting people or undercounting people.
Yes.
Sorry, my only question was, out of the report, was there anything that surprised you or that you found interesting?
No, I I think it's pretty much about the same every year. I was happy to see that we have some gains. For example, through natural roll up, we had 129 graduates and then we have 133 kindergarteners. So that's, you know, a natural plus four students. On the next page, you will see, this slide shows a comparison between the official September 30th count for PK to 12 from last year and this unofficial enrollment report for this current September 30th count. And it appears that we have plus 13 students. That's a big deal.
Yeah.
Especially when we were projected to lose kids for the next four years. So once again, county commissioners, if you're listening, you're watching, you're saying, well, we're losing students. We're losing students. We're gaining students. So they're kind of losing their excuses little by little as we go through our day-to-day business.
Yeah, I'll just say, we're very pleased that it is 13 to the positive. You know, again, this is not official yet, but, and that does not include our brand-new three-year-old program of 20 students. So if we were to count the pre, the pre-K three-year-old program, that would really be a plus, what, 33?
Yes.
But they will get counted next year, right?
They, they will. I think I just want to point out that while we are definitely, the numbers right now are showing that we are beating the state projection for us, that we're beating the odds by growing. The funding, the way the funding comes in is our foundation funding is based on students in kindergarten through 12th grade.
We don't get.
Pre-K four-year-olds, we get blueprint money for those who are eligible for the 600% of poverty line. So we get supplemental funding of about a million dollars to put towards the pre-K fours. And then, of course, the three-year-old program we launched this year using grant funds. And that will become self-sustaining through.
Is the pre-K four and the funding we get for a certain demographic, is that because not every school district offers universal pre-K?
It is because the state is providing supplemental funds for the neediest students.
Well, I mean, there was a time, well, I mean, Kent County, under Dr. Couch, made it a priority. So that's what I, I mean, Queen Anne's doesn't have it and we benefited from a couple of their students coming to our pre-K.
Yeah.
Because they don't meet that criteria in Queen Anne's. And then, when, then they go back over to Queen Anne's when it's time to go into kindergarten.
Yeah. Yeah. So the supplement is, it's just because the state doesn't fund universal.
Right. Okay, that's, I didn't say it. That's what I was asking, but I didn't, I didn't say it, right?
One quick question, Dr. McComas, if we go back to the spring, for our pre-K three-ohs, is there something like maybe the superintendent, I forgot what your group's called?
Pizzan.
Where you all can go and say, hey, listen, maybe a certain number of school districts have introduced P, pre-K for three-ohs. Could we fight for additional funding for that where we're not using grants? And this maybe be supplemented from like blueprint with the early child development or maybe like supporting the whole child type there?
Yeah, I, that's all part of changes that need to be made to the legislative blueprint law itself. We are uniquely positioned because we have been able to expand into the three-year-old program. Many school systems aren't close to adding three-year-olds. Some have dribbles here and there where they're trying to. But most of the sizable school systems in the state have a building capacity. They don't have room in their buildings for even four-year-olds, let alone three-year-olds. Now, our three-year-olds are, you know, we're leasing space using grant funds. Because once our new middle school is open, our fifth graders then come out and go to the new middle school building. And then we will have room in every elementary school for our three-year-olds and then room for other grade levels to grow as well. So we're, the truth is, we are a shining example in the state of early childhood. We really do lead the state in that because we have been wisely, while we're simultaneously have been losing enrollment, we've been optimized. have been losing enrollment, we've been optimizing our space to try to kind of stop the enrollment loss through expanding early program, early childhood programs. And I know Mr. Porter will be talking about that soon, so.
Alrighty, any, any other, so thank you very much for the information. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Walker?
I do have a few more slides.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Okay. So this slide shows where our newly enrolled students came from, whether they came from other Maryland public schools, from out of state, Maryland private schools, local Maryland private schools and homeschooling.
Question for Dr. McComas with this, I know sometimes when they leave our school district, you were doing like an exit interview. For something like the 20 kids that come from the local private schools, is it a way we can do like a, I guess, a self-assessment on, hey, why are you returning? So that way we can kind of collect that data as well? Cause 20, because the big, once again, big news, one of the things that, you know, everyone was saying was we were losing all our kids to the private schools. Well, there's only in Queen Anne's and Kent County, three you could possibly go to that affect us.
Right, and some of those schools serve special needs, right? There's a unique, it's not like a general comprehensive program. There are specific programs for specific needs. I, I, I have been thinking about your, your point of how do we engage the families that are, have enrolled with us? I have begun to, I believe in handwritten notes, I have begun to write handwritten notes to thank them for choosing Kent County Public Schools because they could have made other choices, but they've chosen us. So I think that that's the, the entry point to, again, reinforce a positive relationship and that we, we want to be the school system of choice, not the school system of default. So.
And one more question to that point, for something for like homeschooling. Once again, I assume people, you don't know why kids, they take their kids to homeschool. But when they come back, could we, to your point, find out like, hey, is it something that homeschool wasn't offering that we're offering? And then it gives us a foundation to build on for our school system to draw people in when we're looking.
Right, I quite agree that it, it's a rich opportunity for us to gain insight and learn. One of the things I do know that, that is common pattern in homeschooling from having served in other school systems in the state is oftentimes homeschool students return at the high school grade levels because they're getting into more sophisticated coursework. So maybe they're taking calculus or chemistry. And I have often seen in other school systems, it's usually somewhere in that high school level where homeschool students will return to the public school system. And if not us, then they often may start taking classes at a community college because that level of sophistication starts to require people with degrees, expertise in those areas of study.
Well, I noticed this year it evened out. We had seven homeschoolers come in and we lost, I mean, eight, come in and we lost eight to homeschool.
Yes, and, and this is the next slide and I can tell you that I've spoken to several parents and sometimes they homeschool their students and they realize it's not that easy. It's not working out. And we also review portfolios twice a year and if they are not compliant twice, then we tell them they have to come back to school. That doesn't happen a lot, but that does happen.
Right, and that's state law that way, that we, we service the state's agency to ensure that homeschool students are in fact getting an education and that if, if it's, there is an evidence to that, that.
Yes. So near the bottom of this slide, you see whereabouts unknown. If students don't show up to school before September 30th, we are obligated to withdraw them, but of course, we still look for those students and we look to see if they're in other districts and the process just didn't work the way it was supposed to, or we try to get them to come back.
That's a good example of where you may see discrepancies between our preliminary enrollment numbers or unofficial and the official, right?
And then the, the one economic reason, I thought someone might ask about that. So this was a student who was over 18, not required to attend school, but did not yet have their diploma. They wanted to withdraw to work and help the family. We did everything we could, you know, offer alternative scheduling and social supports. So it took about a month going back and forth with the student, trying to get the student in the school, but ultimately that student decided to withdraw. So they're not compelled to come, but, so we gave them resources for GED and sort of.
Okay, that was my question. We took them all the way to 18, did we at least push them to get a GED?
Yes. On this slide, you will see there were 273 Kent County students enrolled in these five private schools. And I know that seems like a lot and it is a lot, but it is 42 less than this time last year. So I'll, I'll take that as a, as a gain. And finally, on September 30th, we had 111 homeschool students, which was 17 less than last year, of course. That's fluid, so it can change at any time. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, Mr. Porter?
Good evening, President McGee, Dr. McComas, members of the board. I am here at the request of the board to provide a blueprint implementation update. So what was prepared for you and what has just slipped away from me out of my, my phone there is a, a presentation on pillar one of the blueprint. So what you have is our efforts to expand access to early childhood education for eligible groups of three and four-year-old students. This presentation was highlighting enrollment trends, well, the, the goals of the program is what you're seeing here. The continuum of services that are available to students from birth all the way through readiness for kindergarten with a new tier here, which is our three-year-old pre-K program, which we've talked about over the summer. We do have enrollment trends in our pre-K over the last, well, for a four-year window all the way up to this current school year. We had a slide on the financial impact both to families and the cost saving for participating in our pre-K program and then the cost savings to Kent County Public Schools, who historically has offered four-year-old pre-kindergarten 100% locally with the advent of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. 25% of that cost share goes to the state government, which represents a significant savings over a multi-year period. And then finally, steps that we are planning to engage moving forward to satisfy our requirement for implementing pillar one of the blueprint.
If, if I may, Mr. Porter, I just want to highlight this photograph here are our three-year-olds. You see our young man there shaking the hand of another student. And then the photo on the very first slide was also our three-year-old program. I just want the highlights since they're our youngest and newest members of Team KCPS. Thanks, Mr. Porter.
Question, Porter. On this slide right here, mixed delivery, public and private, can you give me an example actually what that means?
Sure, so mixed delivery, we offer public pre-kindergarten in all of our schools. We're a public school that offers pre-kindergarten. You could also attend private pre-K, not here in Kent County, but in many districts. I could give you the example of Cecil County Public Schools, Mount Aviat Academy. It's a small Catholic school that my nieces and nephew happen, happen to go to. They were able to scale a pre-kindergarten classroom, so they serve four-year-olds in full-day pre-kindergarten. So they have seats in the private, in a private school that meet all of the same requirements that Kent County Public Schools or a public school system is required to meet. So that's what the blueprint envisions is that, as Dr. McComas was alluding to earlier, larger school districts have not been able to do what we've been able to do with pre-K expansion simply because they don't have the space. What the blueprint law asks school systems to envision, if there are space limitations, they ask them to envision partnerships with private entities to offer pre-kindergarten in a private space. The, the requirements for that are very rigid, whereas the public school system often has individuals like myself who are skilled at competitive grant writing, which is why we were able to do our three-year-old pre-K program. Smaller, private, pre-kindergarten or private schools likely would not be able to invest the time in competitive grant writing. The salary piece as well is a large deterrent. Private pre-K classrooms are required to pay competitive wages with the public sector and we know that the blueprint envisions higher wages, a base salary of $60,000 for entry-level teachers and it's just very challenging for the private sector to keep up with those rigid requirements.
Question, Dr. McComas, for the three-oh pre-K, is that a, an age group and demographic we will draw data from?
Yes, it is. And so we'll start to incorporate that and we just administered, the state has a new kindergarten readiness assessment this year, STAR assessment, and our three-year-olds participate in that. So we'll begin to see and how, what their baseline is, right? That's their entering the school system, where are they? And then we'll be able to, over time, track the, the students who came to us as three-year-olds, how do they fare? You know, we know research shows, you know, Head Start programs, the earlier you can begin working with students and preparing them for academic success, it does yield greater outcomes consistently. So that's part of why pillar one exists in the blueprint, early investment, because we know families benefit from that support, right? Like, you know, many families, everyone's working and children still need to learn all those things like colors and shapes and numbers and letters.
So ultimately, I mean, there was a time when we led the state kindergarten readiness, so I'm thinking that this will move us again, just in anecdotally, I mean, the kinds of things that doesn't, doesn't show up on the slides, how's it going? You know, that's what I want to know and there is a waiting list, right? I mean, are we thinking that, that 20 is going to be, I mean, are we thinking that next year, the year after? I mean, I know it all depends on the capacity at the Presbyterian Church, but is 20 going to be our threshold for the three years that we have the grant?
Well, 20 for this location, and Mr. Porter, correct me if I'm wrong, much of it is because of the capacity of what we're allowed to hold in that space. But what we are very hopeful for is pursuing those grant, that same grant for Galena and Rock Hall. The challenge.
Because it is unfortunate that those other two areas don't have this opportunity.
Right. So we're hopeful to be able to expand to our other two elementary zones for next year. I know Mr. Porter's probably already on that.
We, we did the feasibility study of Garnett Elementary School where we learned that it was not, you know, we could not put a new classroom in there. We did that on Halloween of 2024. So we could step into our other elementary schools on Halloween and follow suit and follow a similar timeline. I don't think that, you know, we, we don't have the space concerns in those buildings that we had for Garnett.
Right, yeah, that's true.
So we're more optimistic about being able to do it.
Especially Rock Hall.
Yeah. So, but I, I think to answer your original question, the, the three-year-old program seems to be going quite well. I don't know that there was a huge waitlist, but there was a waitlist. We've learned a lot through implementing that program. We've learned a great deal by implementing a program off-site in leased space. But everything seems to be ironed out fairly well. We did have grant funding that we sort of set aside within the pre-K expansion grant to see, you know, if we needed to invest more in one area or another, we could do that through the grant and everything seems to be going pretty smoothly at this point.
So is it considered part of Garnett?
Yes.
So Mrs., so Brenda's their principal, right? So how often does she get up? I'm just wondering, even though it's just like a mile and a half away, I'm just sort of wondering, how do they communicate with each other?
Yeah, I, I think she's over there a good bit. She's, she is an early childhood educator herself, so she's particularly passionate about it. And I will say, I think this is an example where the teacher specialist and lead teacher at the main Garnett building as opposed to our satellite location allows her, she has the support administratively to be able to get over there and support. I will say, as Mr. Porter said, we've had some learning points along the way, one of which is custodial support, you know, three-year-olds.
Make a mess.
Yes, they need custodial support and, and we can only ask our teachers to go above and beyond, but so much, right? Like at some point, they deserve support as well.
And I do want to celebrate Ms. Yuri, Ms. Gordillo Terreros and Ms. Marone over there, the three instructors in that program, who took a bit of a risk stepping out of their comfort zone to participate in that. But the service to the community is nearly unimaginable, but very imaginable at this point.
The feedback from the parents, are they over the moon?
That's, that's what we have not collected. I'm sure they, I'm sure that the, the instructors collect that feedback daily, but I would like to collect that anecdotal feedback just to measure the impact from the voices of the families.
And keep in mind, we are probably just in week four of the, of the three-year-old program because by the time we had everything in line, we were chasing that timeline. And I think it was just around September 15th or so that.
It was the first day, was it? Because I, I asked at our last board meeting and I was a week early and hadn't started yet, yeah.
Right, so, and I know, I know this photo was taken on the very first day, so.
Let's not forget, we, it's not possible if Presbyterian Church don't step up.
Correct. If they weren't seeking to partner with us and, and that, you know, they had their own aligned mission that they were trying to fulfill, that the partnership just really kind of came together. And I want to thank Mr. Porter and Ms. Jack Moats and, you know, the entire team who worked together to, you know, bring that from vision. I remember in a meeting when they were like, there's this grant, do you think we should pursue it? And I said, yes, pursue it. And, and then the team ran with that and, you know, left over tall buildings and, you know.
There's another example of if you build it, they will go.
That's right, it is an example.
It's a fact.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question. For the savings, so.
Yeah, go back to that, that's my favorite slide.
So I mean, it's great for us to hear, but how would we, and this is the, Mr. Porter and yourself, Dr. McComas.
Yes, sir.
How would we go to pitch that to a family of like, hey, listen, here's what you can also say with this 80% of our population being in poverty, how is that something we can work on and drive in home to kind of talk dollars and cents to our community?
I think, thank you for the opportunity because I was particularly thankful that Mr. Porter included this because we have been talking as a team about the importance of communicating at large in Kent County, the value add that we bring to the community, right? What is it people are getting for their tax dollars? And as many of you know, remember, we saved $3.2 million out of parents' pocketbooks last year just for that senior class. So we are in the process of really quantifying the return on investment that our, our community tax dollars yield for our families. This is all part of, if you go back to the communications or the public relations campaign, you know, the first campaign was really about the middle school and making sure all community members are aware of the middle school project and where we are in that. The second campaign was really about communicating the value that, of a Kent County education. This is one example and so this would be one of many examples that we would work with their communication specialist, Mr. DeBilio, on and communicating broadly, right, to the, the community. So people see what, what they are getting for their tax dollars for our community.
And it also kind of empowers them to advocate for themselves, which, to be honest, we don't see a lot of from our community. We see it in times of despair and desperation, but like, some of these things, especially in like the lower-income communities of like Brook Meadows, Fairleigh, can be kind of communicated to them where they can start championing for us as well, championing, championing for the public school system.
Yep, and I, I also think this is a good example. I know, Ms. McComas, we talk oftentimes about the blueprint, what's, what's making a difference, what isn't? I think, you know, while we would love for the blueprint to pay 50% of pre-K, at least we're getting a million dollars from the state to support that, right? Whereas, you know, before blueprint, we weren't getting that. So I think it's a good example I often think about in communicating the pros and cons, right? Where is the blueprint benefiting Kent County and where is it maybe not working for us, right? And so I know we've talked about bringing that forward, so this is, is like one of our first attempts to help do that for everybody.
Yeah, it's a hope for sure.
Yeah.
Ms. Dorsey, is there anything you wanted to say?
No.
Alrighty, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Porter?
No, we're just excited to see how we can transform the community through early childhood education as part of the blueprint.
Thank you. Nice job bringing this all together too.
Already the new procedure, Mr. Hushen?
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, school board members. Also joining me is our communication specialist, Dan DeBilio.
No, we're just excited to see how we can transform the community through early childhood education as part of the blueprint.
Thank you. Nice job bringing this all together, too.
Already the new procedure, Mr. Hushen?
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, school board members. Also joining me is our communications specialist, Dan DeBilio. Tonight, we stand before you with a new procedure to address late student arrival. This is more to address how we internally, as a staff, handle that interaction. Dan and I assembled a subcommittee that consisted of a school principal, our school safety coordinator, our director of technology, as well as ourselves. And through that subcommittee and work with our leadership team, we came up with this new draft procedure that goes before you tonight for information only. And I'll turn it over to Dan to kind of speak to what's in it.
Good evening, board members, Dr. McComas. Again, really, this is about standardizing for our school staff the actions to take when a student arrives in school. A lot of it is focused around ensuring proper parent notification because it is often the case that a tardy student may not be dropped off at school by a parent. It may be a caregiver or another individual at, at the high school. It could be that the student drove themselves to school. So we're ensuring that when they come in, we are checking the identification of the person who the student arrived with. We're noting who they are, the reason for tardiness, again, so that we can make that parent notification and explanation. So, you know, that documentation, time of arrival, reason for tardiness, name of adult accompanying the student if applicable. We are providing late arrival passes to students. We're notifying the, the student's teacher that they'd be going to so the teacher is aware that they'll be coming. We do provide an escort to class if it's required, if the student needs assistance. If it's a new student who's unfamiliar with the building, or as we otherwise just deem appropriate. And then we're ensuring that once a student arrives at class, there is that verification back to the office. So again, we can make all of that communication known to the parent and to our internal team so that they're aware again. Students here, present, accounted for, they did arrive late, and here's the reason why. We've also created a checklist that will be given to anyone manning the security vest fuel in the main office. This breaks down each of those steps. Again, so we have that standardized procedure for our staff, whether it is our usual security vest fuel personnel, or if they're out covering a lunch shift, whoever is covering the security vest fuel for them.
And that is something that really became, you know, noticeable through this process. And, you know, for all of you that have been in all of our schools, you know, some of the schools and the security vest fuel and the front office is set up differently. And there's not always a consistent person that is up there operating that station. And what we found out to, to standardize that process is they needed something like this where if the normal person is out on lunch or is absent, that the whoever is filling in has something that is very easy to read, to go off of, so that we can be very consistent across all of our schools.
Is this data logged in the computers or is handwritten?
Yeah, so you'll, you will note the reference to the SIS, that's our Student Information System inside Power School.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Since this will be a change in terms of the adult accompanying the student, having to come into the building, that, that's my understanding is that that'll be a change. How, like, when we think about, okay, it starts and then sometimes parents are aware, sometimes they aren't. I'm sure will be broadcasted that this is something new. But do things get missed? How, how is that, how are we gonna get everybody on board? You know what I mean? Just, is there a grace period? Because it'd be very easy for someone to just drop my kid off like normal, not realizing.
Absolutely. This will be communicated out to families to ensure that they're aware of it. There certainly will be cases where the parent is likewise in a rush to leave and they drop the student off at the door and the student brings the bus with themselves. You know, we would make a note to the student to, can you remind whoever brought you to school that if you come in late again, please make sure your parent comes in with you or the adult escorting comes in with you next time?
And that should, well, high school, maybe I wouldn't be as for like, but like, elementary and middle school, I see it often, I, I do it. I just drop them off, look soon as I see that door open, I pull off. I think it adds another layer of security for everyone. Save, save the liability. Just walk your kid in the building. You could take that extra two minutes to walk your kid in the building.
And it, and it is, again, capture, about capturing that information to notify the parent if the parent is not the individual dropping the student.
Yes.
So I've got a, I, when I read this, this, I had a question and it may be beyond the scope of the, this particular thing. So if it is, just shut me down. So I just wondered, there's a, there's a difference between being tardy and someone who's legitimately late to school because they had a dentist appointment in the, so I, I'm, I don't know. I, I think there's a policy, do you only get so many tardies? And then there's a consequence?
That is part of the attendance policy.
Okay.
This is a separate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
This is an operating procedure for our staff, to guide our staff through the process
I got you.
of what to do when the student arrives, as far as attendance track.
Okay. Thanks.
And that's why Dr. Walker's not standing up here.
Okay. No, I just, like I said, my mind started to think about kids that are legitimately late as opposed to a high school kid that stops at Dunkin' Donuts every morning to get a donut and coffee before they roll in five minutes late. Okay.
And I'm, I'm looking at the policy now and it's saying dated review by Board eleven thirteen.
I think it might be a typo.
It should have been October thirteenth today.
Well, change that we were working off of a, just a general draft, so that will actually say tonight.
October, it should be ten thirteen instead of.
Yeah, ten thirteen twenty-five.
Is this, is this, we wouldn't have to approve this, right?
No, it's just, no, it's a procedure, so it's for information only.
And when would it be implemented?
We're gonna start implementing it as soon as we are able to get out the communication. The procedure was, and the checklist was sent out to all of our school principals last, early last week. So we're just about good to go. We just have to get out the communication.
And I'll just say, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what a student has to say.
I just, okay, so my schedule, and I know a lot of people, my junior's and senior's schedule gets hairy when college classes come into play and like, I don't come until third period. So I'm assuming.
You're not considered late.
Okay, just, just making sure, yeah.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
You know, we, I mean, we know who's, has what programs of study, right? So that's an example of like, we know. This is really, I think, to Mr. Queen's point, when we think about younger children, you know, we want to make sure that we're good partners with parents and the, like, custodial supervision, right? To make sure that young people are.
Yeah, because when, when, when you say goodbye to your student in the morning, you're assuming they're going directly to, to school. And if something would happen when they're supposed to be in school, you, you need to be able to cover all bases. I get it.
Because it has happened at the middle school. They told me my daughter wasn't at school and I was like, I dropped her off. And because she don't have a phone, I got to send the wife up there and say, hey, figure it out. But it, it clears that up. And it gives a peace of mind because for about fifteen minutes, my wife was getting on me about not paying attention. And I was like, I literally watched her walk in the door. So something like that, where you all will call the parent and say, you know, hey, Queen, I dropped her off by John Queen. It'd help a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So is that you all being proactive and fixing something or?
There would, there was an incident that, that occurred last year that was brought to us that we looked into internally. And under Dr. McComas's leadership, we thought it was best to further look into it by establishing a subcommittee. And through that subcommittee, we felt like we were able to address this from a broad perspective, so it was consistent at all levels.
Good. I like it.
Yeah, we appreciate, you know, we're trying to, where we need to establish standard operating procedures because again, at any given moment, somebody who's routinely doing something could be sick. And then we have somebody else stepping in. So well, how will they know to, to not miss a step, right?
Yes, correct.
And I just think to, I think, well, there's accountability, but then I think the larger issue is student safety.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Very welcome. All righty, Administrative Services, Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, President McGee, Dr. McComas, members of the board. My first item for you guys tonight is our monthly expenditure report. This will be for, or September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So the first item you'll see here is our cash receipts through the end of September. So this encompasses everything starting in, on July one through September thirtieth. So for Fund One, our current expense fund, we've received about eleven point three million so far this year. School construction, we haven't received anything yet because we haven't put any reimbursement requests in yet. And food service, we've received about two hundred and twenty-four thousand so far this year, bringing us to a total of about eleven point six million dollars in receipts so far this year. Any questions on that before I go down? Moving further down, so this is our current expense fund at the moment. As I alluded to last month, now you can see that encumbrances column much larger now because our, you know, our ten-month staff have finally hit. So most of that would be obviously salaries for all of our various departments and categories. So, so far this year, we've expended or encumbered about twenty-two point two million dollars, which is about fifty-seven percent of the budget at this point. You know, the, the biggest thing to remember there is, you know, most of this is encumbered upfront. So fifty-seven percent at the end of September, you know, you think you're only, you know, completely twenty-five percent of the year. We're a little off, but that fifty-seven percent number will very slowly creep up as we go on the rest of the year. So you won't see any large jumps from month to month there.
Let me ask a question about maintenance, because I, I want to make sure I'm understanding this, right?
Yep.
That remaining balance of about three hundred thirty thousand, that's for the duration of this school year.
That is for the duration of the school year.
And question to that, does that include, I want to say it was a hundred and fifty thousand?
This does not. We haven't received it yet. We had just signed some documents this morning to further go through that process of receiving that. So that hundred and fifty thousand dollars would contribute to this maintenance budget. And you'll see a budget amendment come here in the next month or two whenever we finally receive those funds. Since, you know, we didn't know at budget season exactly when those would come in, so we didn't plan for them in the budget. So at some point in time here, you'll see a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget amendment where obviously our revenue will go up by a hundred and fifty thousand and our subsequent maintenance category will go up by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Because I'm watching that.
Yep.
Only because we haven't gotten a new middle school.
That's right.
Yep.
We agree.
So scrolling down, back to our school construction fund, we have a couple expenditures so far this year, nothing major yet. We're expecting some expenses to come through here shortly as we're finishing up expending the state funding for our architect and engineer design. So I believe we'll probably utilize the rest of the state funding within the next month or two and then it'll then subsequently fall on us to cover from there. But that is already, as you see in the budget here, already spoken for, for the county on their end.
If this is not towards construction, this is just for like, maybe the beds and the architect.
Correct, yep.
Design and engineering.
Yep, design and engineering, yep. And then scrolling down to Fund Five, which is our food service fund, very similar situation. Their encumbrances go up by a good amount about this time every year when their staff kicks in. So as you can see, similar to current expense fund, their fund is sitting at about fifty-six percent remaining for the year. Like I said, very similar situation in that it'll go up very incrementally through the rest of the year now. And finally, we have our restricted funds. If you remember last month, we didn't have anything here because we were still finishing up the audits. So now that the audit is done, we have started to set our budget for restricted funds. We still have a couple more to work through. So that's why you see a couple of categories that look like they're over expended right now. Those won't stay over expended for much longer. As I said, we are, you know, working through getting everything entered into, into the finance software now that our audit is done for the year. So that's pretty much everything. Real quick, I do want to publicly thank Christina Bender, especially on the restricted side, because she handles all of the grants. So, you know, I, it's been a lot on her last couple of weeks with finishing up the audit and then trying to turn around and get this budget set for this year. So publicly, I want to thank her, even though every day I do privately. But, you know, I want to, you know, make it known that this isn't just me here, you know, doing this work. There's a lot of members on our team that contribute to, to all these reports and everything. Any other questions for monthly expenditures? All right, that was for information only. So our next item is the budget amendment that was alluded to earlier. So this is to reconcile year-end officially. So essentially, as you saw, those three categories where we were over expended in the audited financial statements, this is to offset those by pulling from administration since we had savings there to cover our overages and.
Can I just, I mean, I understand student transportation and maybe special education. What, now the instructional salaries could be one person. I don't know. Is that what it was?
It, it can be. This in particular, this usually happens when we're done all of our recodes. So, you know, ensuring that people were budgeted either.
In the right category.
In some salaries that we realized should have been coming out of grants or weren't coming out of grants that we had to, you know, expend locally. So that's just kind of typically how it shakes out at the, at the year-round process.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Nothing out of the ordinary, okay.
No, but I just want to compliment you. You have a great eye. That's sixty-two thousand is about the cost of a IA.
Yeah.
You know, so it could be as simple as an IA we had on a grant and then the end.
Yep, exactly.
I know, initially it sounds like a lot of money, but it, my great eye saw that it could be one person.
Very, you're right. I just want to compliment you.
My great fore眼.
There you go.
That's just for info. I guess you need us to.
We do. We do.
All right, the administration record, are there any other questions, by the way, for that? The administration requests board approval of the unrestricted funds budget amendment number four for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. I'm looking for a motion.
Bring a motion to approve the unrestricted funds for amendment number four.
Mr. Queen has the motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie, second. Is there any more questions or comments? A call for the vote, all in favor? Aye. It's unanimous, Ms. Manley. All righty, we will move on to board discussion and.
Oh, we have capital improvement.
Oh, Suzanne, that's the biggie.
I thank you, everybody, for the budget amendment.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
All right, finally for you tonight, we have board approval for the FY twenty-seven capital improvement plan. Just to kind of give you the highlights quickly, and I know Ms. McKenzie had a couple of questions and I'll touch on those. I received those. So I'll answer those in just a second. Just to inform everybody, we are going to request the remaining balance of what is owed to us by the state for construction for FY twenty-seven. So it's about sixteen point eight million. The thought process is, go ahead and request it. We're hoping to get all of it. If not, the remaining will be paid in FY twenty-eight for the, for the remainder of construction. But we're gonna do everything on our end to try to use up all the state money first to buy time for the county to, you know, kind of, you know, this could mean an extra few months without having to make a payment yet, which, you know, could help them in their process. So, so that's kind of the thought process of trying to expend all the state funding as, as early as possible.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Oh, no, no. And to thank Mr. Kirby, he's really.
Yeah, I, I've got a.
Strong leader in this.
We're in the question part, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got a question that, since this is, the, the middle school's our only thing on the CIP. And the fact that, you know, I think we all were hoping to get, get a more definitive response either last week or, or next week. I wondered if this jammed us up or if we just go ahead with business as usual and, and get it on the books for fiscal, for, for, you know, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Fingers crossed with the hope that we get what we need from the county to at least maybe put some shovels in the ground, maybe over the summer, maybe late spring. I mean, is that the thinking? Because otherwise, there's another, we, despite what the, if they gave us the go-ahead, if we don't have it on the books for this year, we can't do a darn thing. Is that right?
Correct. So we want to keep the train on the track.
Right, yeah.
And while our speed is slowed down, we are still on the track.
Okay, yeah.
And so that's what we want to stay on that track. And hopefully, over the next, you know, six months, we can get back up to speed and keep moving forward.
We want to get the money while the money's there to get it right.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we don't want to falter on error commitment around this project because the state is encumbered money for this, right?
And this is our only capital investment plan, right?
Right.
The middle school, that is our major.
That is our number one. You will see that, I don't know, Mr. Kirby, if you want to talk about, we do have one there sort of like a general reference to potential CTE projects, but they're not, they're not specific projects. And I think it's worth a few comment on that.
There's a, there's a part of the plan where you have to list out potential future projects. They don't have to be in great detail, just essentially the state just wants a heads up of what could potentially be coming down the road.
Right.
So one thing that we've included for the last few, you know, two or three years now is some target renovations for the high school, because that would kind of be next in line for a renovation project. Now, you know, we're not sure exactly what fiscal year we're talking about yet for that, but it is on the plan, just so that way everybody is aware and the state is aware that it's something on our mind for down the road after the middle school project. So there is no request for funding yet or anything like that. It's very plain stage level.
Conceptual, kind of like, well, when this is done, then what are you looking at?
Exactly.
Kind of general concept.
So I, Dr. McComas answered my question, but I don't know that I asked it well enough. So maybe in case there happens to be any board members that might be sitting on the fence about whether they want to approve this or not, given the sort of nebulous state of the middle school, can you speak to the, I don't want to say the urgency, but why it would not be wise to not approve it now? Is there, I mean, I understand it, but I just want to make sure everybody understands why we need to just keep going forward.
And I can kind of touch on Ms. McKenzie's, one of her questions as well, together in this. Basically, how the process works is in October, you submit a draft. So we've already submitted that. By the end of November, you have to have a final.
Was the draft that letter you sent to Mr. Donovan or Donahoe or whatever a week ago?
Yes, exactly. So so we submitted that about a week ago. And then it comes to Board of Education approval. After that, it has to be approved by the county, and that is where they have to then send in their letter of support, which everybody had discussed, and that was what Mr. Price had motioned for last Tuesday.
With a contingency order.
Exactly. And and it's, it's not out of the ordinary. There's typically contingencies attached to those letters, not just from our county, but from most counties. You know, that say barring unforeseen circumstances or unforeseen budgetary restrictions, we're going to support this project and our piece of it. So the IAC needs that by the end of November. And then the process from there basically flows into 75% approval comes around Christmas time. They give you an idea of what to expect, or since we're requesting 16.8, they'll give us an idea of how much that 16.8 they have in their budget to give to us for FY27. At that point, we can then, you know, write letters of appeals, which we did last year. And that's how we were able to receive an extra 3.5 million for FY26. So that appeal process goes through in January or February. The 90% recommendation comes, and that's usually the end of February. And that's usually pretty close. It doesn't change too much between that and the final approval in April. So so the 100% recommendation comes through in April, that's when we know for sure what we're getting for FY27 from the state. And then it gets approved at their May board meeting essentially, and that kind of enacts it.
I would say thank you for giving that timeline, because essentially, we haven't voted yet, but let's just say we all approve this. We don't need to make a real decision until they have to make their real decision, because we almost, let me ask this about.
Well, this was on, wasn't this our CIP, on our CIP last year, too?
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Yes, multiple.
It doesn't admit us, it just makes it possible if we are in a position to do something.
The Board of Education approves that we are applying for construction funding.
And we did let the money fit, right? We don't really do too much with it, do we?
It's, it's basically, it's a reimbursement process. So so we request it from the state as we start to expend it. Yep.
Right. So once we do break ground and we are paying bills related to construction, that's where, you know, we get our receipts and then submit to the state to get reimbursed for that.
Are there any more questions?
I think Ms. McKenzie had one more. It was about about the future of high school and how that split would work, I think. So it would be the same thing. It would be partial funds coming from the IAC, partial funds coming from the county. So it would still be that 50-50 cost share that's currently in place. So it would, it would go through the same process that the middle school has where, you know, the IAC has to commit their portion, then the county has to turn around and write their letter of support for their portion.
One last question for capital improvement plans. I know you just said we kind of give a vague description of what we might want. Have we really put thought into like maybe three to five years down the line on, we know we need this, we know we want to go here and kind of start getting those asked in now?
Yeah, we're pretty much at that point, because actually the middle school, if everybody remembers, was the final project on the 2018 Strategic Facilities Master Plan that was put together. And we've kind of followed that, you know, every project that was on that plan culminating with the middle school would have been completed. So we are getting close to the point of time to put together another facilities master plan to see what the future would look like.
Right. And I'll just also say that Mr. Porter has already done an analysis of our CTE programs. And he could right now roll out his scroll of things that we could do and then do and then do and then do after that to continuously upgrade and improve our career technical programs.
Outside of just CTE, is there a limit on what we can kind of ask for with capital improvement plans?
So again, I'll defer to Mr. Kirby.
There's not really necessarily a limit. The state categorizes things differently. So there's limited renovations, which would be similar to what we did at Rock Hall Elementary School, where we just did interior classroom space. And then you've got larger, major renovation, which would be similar to what we did up at Galena, where we did the roof, the HVAC system, and some building systems inside and classrooms inside. So that's kind of the different classifications that the state looks at. It's limited, major, and then obviously replacement or full renovation essentially.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood.
Can I question just in the process? So we'll take a vote tonight. We still, this still has to go to the commissioners, so what? I don't know how they're going to vote, or do you think they pretty much showed their cards last week? And I'm just wondering, what, does that change anything?
It doesn't. I think to Mr. Kirby's point, and certainly correct me if I need to be, you know, last week, they voted to support this with the understanding that.
Okay.
They had, you know, because essentially that contingency, it's similar to our contingencies. You know, like we go into a contract with a vendor, and let's say it's a multi-year contract. We say, well, it's always dependent on, do we actually have the funds to do it? And that's essentially what they said is, yeah, we're committed, given we actually have the money to do it, and we don't know right now if we have the money.
Okay, I just wonder.
They're basing that on the blueprint, because they saying they can't, they keep packaging the school. The new middle school project is being packaged with the blueprint. And I think that's where we lose a lot of the people paying attention to this. They have money to pay for a middle school. Their argument is, well, we can't afford the blueprint.
Right. And the law requires them to do the blueprint. The law doesn't require them to build a new middle school.
Yeah.
And so I understand what you're saying. And and I'm just saying that what they said was kind of no different than what they said last year. Yeah, we support it, provided we have the money to do it, right? And then that's where they're saying, well, we can't opt out of the blueprint.
Yeah.
So therefore, we don't know if we will have the money or not until we find out. I remember Ms. Merritt had talked about she would know more about, was it income, tax?
They should have income, tax, revenue, projections, and margination, I think, is what it said.
They identified, I think it was three or four different points of information that they felt like by May, early May, they would have answers to those three or four different things. And that that would allow them to have a more informed decision. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, we will allow them grace.
Well, it's not a matter of, I mean, they hold the cards on it, so as much as we may.
So to kind of answer Ms. McGee's, you know, question, as long as they approve that letter of support that they talked about last week.
Yeah, so.
When we present to them a couple of weeks here, then that allows the process to move forward and that won't hinder the process.
Okay, got you. Any other questions? Alrighty, so I need a motion. The administration recommends approval of the fiscal year 2027 capital improvement plan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Dorsey's made the second. Any more comments or questions? Alrighty, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, Mrs. Manley. Alrighty, board discussion. We'll start with Alden, our student members board.
Um, I don't have much to say. I know I've been kind of quiet today. But I would like to really emphasize that we need to keep the momentum going for the middle school project. I know we've sort of been talking about that throughout the meeting, but for anyone listening, we still need to be positive and we still need to be united and, you know, do whatever we can and show support however we can.
Agreed.
But I also want to talk about how I think we should continue to advocate for county public schools, like outside of this project. Like, it's been really nice to see people band together and say, this is something we support. And like, I wasn't able to attend the rally, but I heard how nice it was and how people showed up and people were on board. And I don't know, I feel like I hear a lot of student bad things about county public schools, if it's from people in the school system or from outside of it. And like, it's, it hurts. It's not fun to feel like people are deeming us students not able to receive a good education or not worthy of it. And I think that doesn't get talked about enough, especially from the student perspective, but it makes us feel bad. So I think, I'm not trying to like lower the mood here, but I'm just trying to be real. So I think that we've had, we found this really cool common purpose with the middle school project. And I think we should try to expend that positive energy to other parts of our feelings of the school system, if that makes sense.
It does.
Yeah. Yeah, so I just wanted to say that.
I agree. Alden, I agree a lot.
Is that all you wanted to say? Thank, Ms. Dorsey.
I don't have a whole lot to say, because I feel like I said the majority, you know, everything that was kind of on my mind and in my heart for this time, as far as the middle school. I just hope that we can all come together, the commissioners as well, and work with us and and agree to sign for our children so that they will be able to have a school that's suitable. And I agree with Alden when she talks about the children feeling, you know, like, you know, they can be proud of who they are and, you know, the school that they go to. And it would help them if the people in our county or the, those that hit up offices would believe in them as well. I, children, it makes a difference when the grown-ups can encourage them and make them feel like that they're somebody instead of criticizing or acting like that's the last people that they care to support when they are the future of Kent County. So I'm hoping, and I'm praying, that everybody can come together and share in this project and see it through. That's all I have to say.
Ms. McKenzie?
Sure. I don't have a lot to say as well. I do want to say I certainly look forward to supporting, you know, as we face another legislative session, being as supportive as possible to advocating for funding at the state level and, you know, continuing to work at the local level. Because absolutely, our children, as Ms. Dorsey said, are a future and they're worthy of investment. And I think it's, I'm hoping that we can learn how to make that connection with those that are resistant to that idea of investing in the future in this county. You know, I know change is scary, and sometimes people get very focused, especially when they get towards the end of life, on staying comfortable. And, and so how to connect with that mentality, I think, is really needs to be a focus for us to be able to show the value and invest in. Because when I think about local organizations, those churches and organizations that invest in children are the ones that continue to grow. And those, you know, churches and organizations that do not invest in youth, they eventually die out. And so we see this happening all around us in civic organizations, religious organizations, when we don't invest in youth. It's just the natural course of things. And so when we think long-term investment of what can happen in Kent County economically, there's all kinds of ways that investment needs to happen in our county. And children are absolutely a critical piece of that. And I'm looking forward to continuing to support that as much as possible. I did also want to share with the board that I, on October 5th, I had the pleasure of attending a shelter expansion rally at the Presbyterian Church. This was held by the Samaritan Group of Kent County. This was promoting the emergency winter shelter. They are making plans to open in December. They were only, as of that day, we're only a couple thousand dollars short of being able to open a month early. So I just wanted to promote that as homelessness is a concern in our county, very much so. And they are, you know, always looking for volunteers. They're also looking to, you know, save costs through donations of like paper products and things like that. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. It was a great event.
Mr. Queen?
I agree with everything everyone said today. I'm gonna read some, but to piggyback on what you said, investing in youth, a lot of people who know me in this community, I'm the man I am today, well, for several reasons, but I was able to invest in youth in Kent County for 15 straight years. The last three jobs I had was because of my work with investing in youth in Kent County. All of the accolades and awards I get from the state, county, and federal level came from the work I did from investing in youth. So when I hear a lot of people in our community give their point of views and we're all entitled to our opinions, I notice they miss youth. They miss youth and they don't pay attention to people like Alden, people like my two daughters. They forget about them while they're giving their point. So I agree with everything everyone else said, but today I wrote a, I wrote a letter to everyone. So of course, good evening, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as a Board of Education member, but more importantly, as someone who loves this community and believes in the potential of our children, of our schools, and of our future. But I must be honest with you, and I need you to really listen to me. Our public schools are struggling, and we all see it. We see it with test scores. We see it with outdated test books. We see it with teacher shortages. The buildings that haven't been updated in decades. But behind all of that, what concerns me the most is something harder to see, but even more dangerous, our silence, our absence, and our lack of advocacy. Because here's the truth, decisions are being made about our schools right now, at both the county and the state level, and they're not being made, and they're being made without us. Why you ask? Because we're not showing up. We don't speak up. And this is not to the people who do show up, like people that come to the rally, people that come and write letters of support. Talking to some of the masses, when instead of having 400 people outside, we only got 100 outside. When we don't speak up, when we don't attend meetings, when we don't organize, push back, or demand better, our silence gets interpreted as approval, or even worse, as weakness. And that space we leave empty is being filled by outside interests, political agendas, and budget decisions that don't have our children's best interest in mind. Our lack of advocacy is being taken advantage of. Funding is being made an excuse. Decision-makers are leveraging the blueprint as a reason to delay action. delay action while other students, while our students sit in under-resourced classrooms, and while every delay in building a new middle school is costing our public school system money. Because we're not in the room to say Kent County, Kent County and the new middle schools matters to us. And I say this not to shame our community, but as a call of action. Because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And right now, our schools, our kids and teachers are being served up. We must do better. Not now, not later, but now. We need to pack these meetings. We need to call our representatives. We need to vote. We need to speak up, not just when something goes wrong or we're upset, but all the time, consistently, loudly, and together. Because here's what I believe. I know many of you do, too. Our schools can thrive, our children can succeed, and our teachers can be supported, but only if we fight for it. So tonight, I'm asking you, no, I take it back. I'm challenging you to step up, get involved, and advocate, because no one is coming to save our schools but us. Thank you. Just sentiments that goes with everything we've been talking about tonight.
All right, I'll make my stuff quick. First of all, I want to congratulate Alden because she wouldn't acknowledge this, but last week Alden won the North Bayside Conference cross-country race, and she did it in a personal best time. So congratulations. And just for the record, Kent County went one-two in that race because Janie Depp was behind her in second place. The other thing, speaking most specifically to the middle school, last Wednesday, we had a May legislative meeting by Zoom. And it's confidential. They don't take notes. They don't take minutes, and there's no video. So I can't tell you who's, who did what. But I spoke up about, it was a sort of a legislative briefing for what's going to happen in 2026. We've all acknowledged that 2026 is an election year. So the way that that's likely to impact the General Assembly is there won't be the volume of bills there were this past year because everybody's going to be concerned of trying to get themselves reelected. So MAE has come up with a, with a list of four draft priorities, and one of them, it involves ensuring equitable distribution formulas for cost share for construction. So I can't tell you who, but I can tell you that at least two of the other school districts, when I spoke up last year, when I spoke up last week, because last year, MAE took no position on the middle school. And it was because they didn't have a full panel of everybody attending that meeting. And so they needed a certain number for it to, the magic number was seven, and we only got six votes kind of thing. And they were worried that, you know, the money we got would take it away from somebody else. And typically, MAE does not support one school district at the expense of another. But they are making an exception this year, and two other school districts definitely came to our defense. And also, the, I don't know if she's the lobbyist, but for Pazam, the State Superintendent's Association, and my exact, she, she called us the little engine that can't. And she said that she initially opposed that legislation that we didn't get through, but she's come around, but she has come around. And she said that Pazam has given, Kent County Middle School had put that up as the example of how the wealth formula does not work. So there is potential, you know, again, you know, some, some other school districts are seeing the light and supporting us. But then you weigh that against the fact that there's probably not going to be a tremendous amount of innovation done in the General Assembly in the next year. But I think we should keep our foot on the accelerator and don't, don't lose hope.
Agreed.
So that's all that I have. Is there anything else anybody else wants to offer, Dr. McComas? Alrighty, so the next monthly board meeting will be held on Monday, November 10th, beginning at 5:30 PM with the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. The board will also meet for a quarterly work session on Monday, November 17th at 5:30 PM. These meetings will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland. I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. McKenzie's made the motion. I need a Mr. Queen's second. Does anybody want to fight that motion? Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Alrighty, it's unanimous.